We're trying to figure out what it was.
Yeah.
One, two, three. Now we do it horizontal too. Sorry, Brian always gets so much case without that.
He's a good looking kid.
I know, right?
See if they look who can go down there.
Oh, these are great. These are great. He's got a twin brother.
He does?
So yes, he's got a twin, but we have an older son. And his twin looks more like his brother than he looks like his twin. It's a weird family. What's your talent?
I don't know. I'm not quite sure yet.
Yeah, he can give a speech. He can speak off the cuff.
This is Adrian Hart with your southeast Colorado news. We're live with La Junta City Council on SecoNews.org.
You got a good lead.
Seco. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe, tomorrow we're going to be open.
The stars. The stars.
Executive, executive.
This one, the... Yeah, I will.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out to the La Junta City Council meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order for the city council on January 17th, 2023. You know, last year I had MJ Romano come out and give an invocation for us. This year I want to start bringing more and more of our faith community out to do our indications, not just me and the council members. So I have Father Joseph Matitu here. He's with Our Lady of Wazoo, St. Patrick Parish. So if he'd like to come forward and give us our invocation, fathers, thank you. Please stand. Right into the mic. You turned it off. There you go.
Let us now put ourselves and this council in the loving presence of God. Holy God, as we gather together, we recognize our differences in beliefs, values, and faith traditions. But we honor our unity here tonight with gratitude. Lord, we assemble here as members of the City Council of La Junta. It is our privilege and our responsibility to support, foster, and advance the objectives of the City Council. We accept this task in total dependence upon you, for it is you who began this work, you who guided and will bring it to fulfillment. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that feels the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning. We thank you for memory, which enables us to build on the experiences of the past, for imagination, which admits us to a wider world than we could otherwise know, and for foresight by which we plan for the future. Lord, give us freedom to speak the truth boldly and with kindness. Give us patience to listen openly without prejudice. Give us confidence to discover and explore new possibilities. Give us wisdom and insight to discern what is right and good and just. Give us strength to make appropriate heartfelt decisions that are beneficial to our constituents. Give us humility and courage to discern and to do your will with compassion and reverence as stewards and companions for the benefit of the entire La Junta community and beyond. Help us to know and believe in the gifts you have given us as a council, both individually and collectively. Inspire us to solve the challenges we may face and to take joy in our shared triumphs, both mundane and grande. Let us emulate your love as we share our love and generosity for the development of this city and perform our duties with enthusiasm and gratefulness. We call upon the intercession of all the saints to confirm our prayer and to support our endeavors. All glory, honor, and praise are yours, Holy God, for all ages. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Now, if we will stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman Pantoia will lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melon.
Miss Scott.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
McIntyre.
Present.
Ayala.
Present.
Ochola.
Here.
Vila.
Here.
Pantoia.
Present.
Minutes of previous meeting, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll sit.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. That passes unanimously. Before due citizen participation, we have a special guest who is here to give some information. So if Ms. Sarah Blackhurst would come up, Sarah's with Action 22. And Sarah needs to get back on the road before a storm may hit, so. What's your son's name again, Sarah?
It's Timothy Blackhurst. Terrence is the oldest one. Terrence is all this far.
Sorry, Tim. I'm fairish.
Are you speaking too, Tim, though?
Sweetheart, they're teasing you.
Got your mom's back?
He does. He would if we asked him to. He would absolutely get up here and speak. So thanks so much for allowing me to visit with you this evening. I am Sarah Blackhurst, and I'm the president of Action 22. And I need to start with really giving praise and thanks to our board chair, who is your city manager, and that's Rick Klein. We do a lot of work, and I'll get into that in a second, but we absolutely could not do it or couldn't even stick with it if it wasn't for the enthusiastic cheerleading, the support, the devotion that Rick Klein has given. And not only does he represent this community so well on the state level and the regional level, but he really has, his leadership has been instrumental in us pushing forward and honestly, just keeping our doors open through the pandemic, which was not something that was easy. And so we look to him, and he's... And I hadn't told him earlier, but Attorney General Phil Weiser asked me to... I told him I was speaking tonight here, and he asked me to give you his regards as well. So I don't know how familiar you are with Action 22. We had the pleasure of having your mayor with us for an event in Denver this time last year. And it was a tremendous gift to have him there. Besides Rick, we don't see a whole lot of representation at that level from eastern Colorado. And it's part of the problem is that we need more voices, and we need to strengthen our voices, and of course, that is the mission of Action 22. So we serve 22 counties. We are set up in such a way that we have representation of board members up to three from each county and then from seven, up to seven from out of area. Those out of area people are maybe somebody, maybe they're headquartered in Denver, but they do a tremendous amount of business in this region, like AT&T or Colorado Farm Bureau. And they sit, all of them sit on the board. We are not fully seated. And we, because that's a huge amount, but we're working on, and we're not required to be fully seated, but we're constantly adding a higher level of leadership. In the last five years, you see the leaders really stand out. As we went to, there's a couple of things that happened on the legislative side that have been of concern over the last couple of years. And regardless of where you sit, the divide between urban and rural has become greater. And we are, we're really being pushed aside and marginalized. And a couple of things that have happened that we've been tracking is not just the legislation, but itself, which we have to watch dog constantly, but a trend toward not having what we would call adequate stakeholder process. In addition to that, we have seen an upward turn in legislation by decision making. So if this is something that the legislature can't carry, then a commission is put together. It's a, they are a decision making commission. And they will either give, they will either send rules up with new rules or they'll send recommendations for the legislature, and it goes back and forth. The problem that we see with a diversion from stakeholdering and this legislation by rulemaking is evident in a lot of different areas in our region. One of the ones that we talk about a lot and hear a lot of concern is crime. There's been several contributing factors to the uptick in crime that's affecting every aspect of our lives, especially in rural communities. And we're hearing that that, a lot of those pieces that were put into place, whether it was, and they tried to walk it back a little bit, but fentanyl is a huge issue. And then keeping people out of jail and out of prison. And so it's really hamstrung a lot of our local authorities on this. Crime is one of them. The other one that's going to be of particular interest to you during this session is... And there's a lot of different terms, but it is preemptive land use. You're going to have to really fight hard, and we're going to have to fight very hard to protect what you do here, especially with regard to land use issues. And then housing is the other big one. So we're talking about crime, housing, homelessness, which are two completely different issues. How to access funds. All of those things come together. So, and I feel like my mic is a little bit hot. If I stand back, can you still hear me? Okay. So Action 22 operates like this. We know what our mission is, and we stay very mission focused, and that's to build a stronger voice and influence how leadership is done throughout our region. Last year, during the session, I was particularly frustrated with the fact that stakeholdering had gone a different way, that the impacts, there's no real consideration, in my opinion, the impacts of legislation like 1362, which was statewide building code. I saw that more of that was going to come down the pike. And we, even if we didn't agree totally, the representation that we had was a strong voice at the Capitol. In particular, I'm talking about the Senate President and the Majority Leader. So when both of them left, and one of them was trumped out and the other one took a job, you know, even that, we didn't agree with everything they did all of the time, but they still gave a strong voice for rural and especially in this region. We don't have that, quite frankly, anymore. And I was expressing some frustration.
Boy, you know how to make the lights go out, girl. That's right. Hey, Paula, check to see if the police on the, did yours kick out? Well, yours would.
No, mine's on my mobile.
You're fine.
Yeah.
So I'll just talk a little bit louder.
There we go. We had a little power outage.
So what we did is I just mentioned to Brian that there wasn't enough of us being a strong voice. And I wanted him to look into cloning us, maybe. And, because he's a weird nerd like that, I'm sure he's looked into it at some point. But what he came back to me with was, let's start an academy wherein we train our local leaders at a higher level. Do we got it? Oh, there we go. Okay. So I'm going to pass this around to you. And I'll tell you that we've invited Mayor Ayala to be a part of this class. So what our intent is to do, and Lisa, we've also invited Lisa has expressed interest in being in the inaugural class. The purpose of this is to have some skill development for local leaders. This first class, we very meticulously picked. We know that it's going to take, it's, the idea is that we're going to, we are producing a professional fellowship, so that there's mentoring that's a part of it. It's a very high level. We have worked very, very hard to put all this together. In short, do we have, do we have enough? Are there, hey, Timmy, will you bring me one more of those cards?
We have some extra.
Oh, we have extra. Okay. So the idea is to build a deeper bench in leadership. So we have just, last week, we finally got the MOU with CSUP through CSU Systems. That our class will be worth six undergrad credits and six master level credits. This is the level at which this class is going, is going to operate. You will be required to testify on a bill at some point during this session and write a bill for the next class to work with the legislators to get introduced. In addition to that, we are also going to have a project, a community project. And we don't know what it's going to be yet, because these professionals are already at a pretty high level. This is just that next step, so that we can have a more, not only a more unified voice, but a voice that's impactful, that's educated, that understands that. If you look on one side of that, it's, you'll see our, on this side, this is our, this is just a little bit about us and the, and our map. So the orange is our map. But on the other side, you're going to see the blocks that we're going to do. The introduction to the Colorado legislative process, that's January. We're actually pushing it off a little bit because we have Voices of Rural Colorado. And we've designed, in particular, the second day to, and previous Senate President Kevin Grantham is going to be one of the instructors, and Mike Beasley is going to be one of the instructors on that. Oh, let me go back really quick and tell you that we had, we unshelved the Action 22 Foundation, which is a C3, in order to do this. We have a new board in place, and we have got a very impressive Board of Directors for this. Garrison Ortiz is the board chair for them, for this project. The vice chair is Dr. Linda Luhon. Then we've got Ryan McWilliams as the secretary treasurer. Then we also have Felix Lopez from Los Anamos County. And then a young and up and coming water lawyer, actually, that works for oil and gas. His name is Cole Kelly, and you'll know him from the San Luis Valley. So he's a young, pretty impressive guy. We've got two doctorates, so he has a Jewish doctorate, and then, of course, Dr. Luhon, and master degrees. We've just, we've pulled out all the stops. And you know, when your project is blessed, everything just seems to fall into place. We did this whole thing. We put this whole thing together. It will launch on Friday, this Friday. We put this whole thing together in about 120 days. So the rest of this Colorado fiscal policy is going to be, that's going to be taught by CU President Todd Salomon. Nonprofit administration and organizational leadership, there's a whole lot of hands on that one. Federal legislative policy, Brian's going to take that, Brian McCain. And then we've got both VA Director Kilmer is going to be one of the instructors, and Scott Tipton is going to be one of the instructors on that. And then ballot initiatives, how to run ballot initiatives and how to do that in an effective way in Colorado. And then the last of it is, the last month is the wrap up of the projects and all of that. So you can see that this is a really big, intensive deal. We hope that both of you are able to do that. We, it is expensive, and we get that. It's $5,500 for the seven, that seven-month course. What we, what we're doing is we understand that there's about half of our class that are going to need some help with that. They can come with some, but they're going to need some help. But if you're in any kind of leadership role, what do you have to be really good at? And it's asking for money, knowing who and how and where to ask for money. So we're going to help out with that, but we're also going to expect the fellows to ask for some of the help on that. And so we're extending that out. You don't have to have it upfront. So that's, in a nutshell, everything that we're doing. I laugh at the nutshell, because we've been doing this while we're running Action 22, getting ready for the legislative session in Denver, back and forth. But we're doing it. We didn't wait till we were ready. We just operated really in faith on this, and we proceeded, and we've been thrilled with it. So with that, I can answer any questions about the academy, what we're going to do, and then anything on the legislative side, whatever, whatever you guys need to, want to talk about.
So you're going to be in Pueblo?
So this is two days, it's two days a month in person, and the rest of it's going to be online. We understand we're going to have two days that we want you to be there if you can, but we're going to actually set up four days in person, because like I said, everybody is like the mayor. They're mayors, or they're county commissioners, or they're running their own organizations. So we're going to be very flexible, I guess is the word to say it, on all of it, to do that. So those in-person sessions will be in Pueblo, except when they're in Denver. So what else?
So, you know, as you can see, you know, like with Action 22, everybody recognizes when I say the thin blue line, right? You know, with police. Okay. What are the thin local government line? You know, county commissioners, city people, to help those good Americans that we just elected to make sure that they're working on our behalves and believes that benefit all of Colorado, not just part of it. And Sarah, I'm so glad that we have you at the front of that thin blue line.
I'm so glad we have you too, Rick. It's, you know, it's never an easy thing, and there's been a couple of times, I'll be really honest with you, there's been a couple of times in the last 120 days when we decided to do this that I was, I was ready to just throw up my hands, because it's not an easy lift. And I know very, very well that we're the David in this. I mean, honestly, I don't even know how effective we're going to be. But I was trying to contain my emotions. I was exhausted. I was sitting in my office, and I turned to Brian. And if you guys don't, I don't know if you guys have ever gotten to know Brian. He's, he was the former state director for Congressman Scott Tipton, and he's my COO now. And I said, why are we doing this? I mean, I don't even see that we're going to be effective in any way. And he goes, and he waits with me, and he just let me just kind of calm down. And he said, we're doing this because nobody else is. And nobody else can. If not us, then who? And I went, all right, let's do this. So that's, that's what we're talking about at this level, not just on the legislative side, but that rulemaking side, and then creating a network, a professional fellowship that can actually do something more than just worry. Any other questions?
Do you employ a lobbyist?
We have a lobbyist pro bono, and it's Mike, it's Mike Beasley. And I don't know if you know who Mike Beasley is.
Mike's the guy.
So, so Mike Beasley is, when he says Mike Beasley is the guy, he really is like the guy. He's got the most respect of any of the lobbyists, I think, in the state. And he was, if you'll remember back to Governor Owens, he was Governor Owens' chief of staff, and then he ran DOLA for a little while. So anybody who's in the arena, give up a lot of respect for Mike Beasley. And he has been our lobbyist pro bono for longer than, I don't know how long. Yeah.
You got a question, Gary?
Oh, yes.
So what's the main thing that we can do to, to like help out our small-time communities that are struggling to either get in votes or ones that lack representation? What's the best thing we can do there?
Thank you, Mr. Blackhurst, and I appreciate that. I have to tell you that I bought him a new pair of boots today so he can go out, and I didn't pop that question, but he's already been paid for that. Thanks, buddy. No, Timmy's like his mom, and he always asks the, asks the really, he's a Socratic bully like his mom. No, honestly, Timmy, I think the biggest thing that we can do is support the leaders that we have and give them every resource to do the work that I'm talking about.
Then others will join.
Yeah, once, I mean, it's just, it's going to take, it's going to take an effort. We can't, we can no longer, if, and listen, there's times I ask myself, where's the lying? Where we can, Coloradans can still remain Coloradans. And that's the truth of it. This is, this is, for, I think for rural Coloradans, this is the most serious time. And we have to join, lock arms and do something. Otherwise, we got to look at what state we want to retire into, and it's not going to be Colorado. That's how serious this is. Anything else?
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
You see where it's going. Hey, I just want to announce, you know, like, because I see some people in the audience. If you're here for the coaches and rec, it's in the power board room, not this room, but around the corner. So just in case anybody in the audience was.
If you are here for that, thank you for staying so long.
That's right.
Citizen participation, if we have anyone here for a non-agenda item, please come up to the front, state your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
Mayor, I don't have, you know, thank you, sir. But just, this is, during the utility board meeting, we had a, the director of finance came up during that, because she received this. Now, if my finance person's receiving this, we got to get this out fast. But it says, voicemail is a text. Action notice from your electric company. Please be aware that your electric service will be discontinued in the next 30 minutes due to non-payment. Immediate action is required. Avoid disconnection today. For automatic payments and arrangement, press one, press two. That's not us. We don't do that. That, you don't stop, you know, if you get that, delete that. That is a hacker. That is a hacker that's out there and hitting us. So I just wanted to get that warning out there as fast as I could. Thank you.
Sarah, were you going to get up for citizen's participation?
You said no.
Jack, it's your time to say.
Oh, I don't, I'm not sure how to switch, but, sorry, just here. My name's John Garcia. I live at 1406 Colorado Avenue. And I just was going to ask when, and, you know, like, when you came to my house knocking at the door for, you know, you said, "What can we do different here? Does the city approve it?" Well, right in front of my house, there had, there's a big, like, the pavement's half gone, you know, off the curb. Well, it's tearing up my tires, you know, parked there. And you, and you looked at it, and you said, "Yeah, probably it dropped that far, you know. If not, I'm parked halfway into Colorado." And it took a good span, like, there, from driveway to driveway, at least, on 1406 Colorado. 1406 Colorado? Yeah. And then sidewalk, you know. A lot of people walk to the college, from the college, back, you know, through the park. I live by the park, so, so, you know, you get a lot, I got to get a lot of traffic. I had to.
Yeah, where you go.
There's a lot of traffic going through there. My sidewalk is just, really, just like, different levels, so people trip all the time. And, you know. You have a lot of people, a lot of people knocking at my door, asking me, you know, "When am I going to fix the sidewalk?" You know, and I, at the same time, I don't know if I, you know, if I'm responsible for that.
Yes, you are.
For the sidewalk?
Yeah. And the trees out in front.
The trees?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, you know. Now, as far as the curb is that?
And I, and I wish I could say, you know, because every three years, you know, we do a sidewalk program where we go 50/50 with landowners. But with lack of funds, that was one of the things that just sent off. Hopefully, we could bring that back when we get more funds.
Okay.
I apologize.
That, that's what I need to know, you know, because like I say, I know that if I, if I'm not shoveling it off, you know.
But I, I will have the street department look at that street.
Uh-huh.
Okay? I know we don't have asphalt right now, but if there's something we could do temporarily, we'll do it until we can get asphalt.
Okay. It's been there for a while, so I, you know, it's just like I say, it's tearing up the side of my car, and it's parked there, and it's not, I'm parked halfway out in Colorado. And the last issue is the city trash, you know. Okay, I live right on Colorado. Trash truck comes through on Friday. They dump the trash, but there's a lot, they always drop, they always drop trash. And that's not just at my house, that's up and down Colorado, and they don't pick it up. I've called several, several times to just, you know, "Hey, can you get them to pick up that trash?" You know, if, if it falls out, they don't seem, they just drive off, and there's trash all the time, you know, right there on the street, past my street, down the road. Now, I live on Colorado, you know, we get people coming in from out of town, they say, "Oh, what a nice park in the summertime," but then you drive down Colorado, and you see all this trash, you know. But we want our city looking like that. Well, who not? I don't, you know. But I'm always picking it up, so I'm just saying, and I've called the city several times, talked to some lady down at the trash department, and she says, "So take care of the issue." But to me, it hasn't been taken care of, because it seems to be happening every Friday, every Friday. They just won't, the guys in the back of the truck, they just won't bring down and pick up whatever trash falls out of the trash.
And, you know, please, put your trash inside of a bag, you know, loose trash, just dumped in the dumpster. It's like during leaf season, people won't bag it up, and man, it just scatters everywhere. Please help us keep our city clean by bagging up your trash, so when they empty that tote, that a good goes in, and then I'm talking to your neighbors.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
And that's about it.
Thank you for coming and voicing those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen's participation? All right. Moving forward, Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, we have an application from Lahana Chamber of Commerce for a special events permit for their annual chamber banquet to be conducted on Monday, January 30th, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Applications in order, fees have been paid, posting's been accomplished. City management recommends favorable consideration.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, Inspiration Fields has requested a special events permit for their lover's snake night to be conducted at 612 Adams on February 14th, from 4:30 to 7:30. That application's in order, fees have been paid. City supervisors indicate compliance with the code, and management recommends favorable consideration.
All right. Do you have a motion on that?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote.
And I'll abstain as I'm on the Board of the...
One abstention, and then the rest pass unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, Inspiration Fields, doing business, 612 Adams Avenue, has requested a special events permit for a Mardi Gras party to be conducted on February 18th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The application is in order, fees have been paid, posting's been accomplished. City supervisors indicate compliance with the code, and city management recommends favorable consideration.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. Elaine, your abstentions?
Yes, I abstained again.
That's unanimous with one abstention. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, Vance Owens LLC, doing business as Fox Theater at 11 East 3rd Street in Lahana, has requested a renewal of their lodging and entertainment license, currently scheduled to expire on January 5th, 2023. Just as a side note, the state gives us a grace period after the expiration date to catch these things up if a license holder were to be a little late. In this case, that's what happened. The application's in order, fees have been paid, posting's been accomplished. City supervisors indicate compliance with the code, and city management recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Finally, Mr. Mayor, Eagle Lanes LLC, doing business as Eagle Lanes at 2420 San Juan Avenue, has requested a renewal of their tavern license, currently scheduled to expire on January 20th, 23. Again, the application's in order, fees have been paid, posting's been accomplished. City supervisors indicate compliance with the code, and management recommends favorable consideration.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, the council was asked to consider several resolutions that we consider to be housekeeping resolutions. One resolution we asked to be tabled until tonight had to do with the use of city funds in various depositories. Historically, we have always limited the resolution to naming depositories and new business within the city limits. But this latest draft suggests that other financial institutions that comply with the intent of the terms of the resolution with regard to generating interest income should be considered. That would include lots of different places, but primarily Colorado Trust and other things. When the sales tax additional ballot issue failed, put the city in a real bind in terms of being able to provide even essential services. And now, as part of the remedy, the city is searching out other financial institutions that might be able to provide some interest. Just as an editorial note, that...
Somebody ain't living right.
As an editorial note, that doesn't, this resolution does not relieve the city administration from seeking out federally insured deposits and safe investments. So they're not going to be trying to buy states and a goldmine or a orange grove in Tim, Colorado.
Is Colorado Trust FDIC insured?
I believe they are.
Because I thought they weren't.
As far as I know, they are. You might know more than I, Mr. Mayor, but I think they are.
They insure.
No, FDIC insured.
I'm sure they are.
You have that girl in there?
Otherwise, we wouldn't deposit in there, right?
Right. We will never deposit anywhere, or nothing.
That's why not all banks take the city funds. I think it is, Mr. Mayor. I'll tell you why. Most public funds are, the banks that accept public funds have to pledge their bank as collateral for other deposits, and I can't imagine that that would be a banking resolution that would not, a regulation wouldn't apply to Colorado Trust, but I'll find out, because that interests me greatly. I'll see what I know. And you're in the business, so you may know all before I do. I'll find out.
Find out, Mr. Mayor. Do we need a motion?
Please.
I'll make, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution designating official depositories for various city funds.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Two seconds. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. That passes unanimously. All right, my turn. Board appointments. So we have one, two, three, four board appointments. We'll just go in order. Reappoint John Yerger to the Tourism Board, term to expire 12/31/2025. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not a last for your vote. And that passes unanimously. You got that, right?
Yep.
Number two, reappoint Nancy Bennett to the Urban Renewal Board, term to expire 12/31 of 2027. Do we have a motion on that?
So who?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously.
You've got names on Colorado Trust? Yes, it is. Colorado Trust and other entities are covered by the state federal, because they are approved to use public funds in through those agencies. Banks insure through FDIC, however, since we have to be 100% insured, they pay additional insurance on top of...
Number three, reappoint Justin Miller to the Urban Renewal Board, term to expire 12/31/2027. Do we have a motion?
Set motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. That passes unanimously. Number four, appoint Tony Madrid to the Urban Renewal Board, term to expire 12/31/2026. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations to all those appointed, especially you, Nancy, to see you in the audience. Good job. All right. Moving on. Approval of updated bylaws by the Urban Renewal.
If I may, I think everybody knows me, Cynthia Neve. You do not have to waste your time on this, because the authority does not need approval of City Council for bylaws. It's in, it's not in the state statute, and we're an independent authority. But I'm happy to share these bylaws with you. I don't know if anybody took the time to read it, but these were prepared by Daniel Horton. So can you confirm that it's an independent authority?
It's an authority.
Yes. So I'm sorry that, that you've received those, but I'm not sorry that you've received them, because I think they're very good. Do you have any questions about the bylaws? If you do, I can come back on a later day. My apologies for wasting your time at all. Thank you.
What does the attorney have to say?
Not me.
He's not the attorney?
I don't have, I'm not the attorney for the Urban Renewal Authority, although they do have, and I can't think of his name.
Paul Benadini?
There you go.
Yeah, and Daniel Horton has also been...
But he's not licensed, is he?
Yes, he is.
I appreciate having this. It's good information. I was, kind of got stuck in the trailers and trailer park area, and so I'll continue on if I have any points.
Well, certainly, and I would be happy to talk to you about anything that this involves, but I think it's a very thorough bylaws.
Thank you.
More so than you get in a lot of committees.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, kudos to Amy Hill, Ripcline, and Martin Montrell. Those three guys, maybe Mr. Jackson as well, decided that they were going to go through all our uniform codes, which are quite extensive. That's not pages, that's hundreds of pages of uniform codes, a lot of fine print, and to update it, to excise out outdated references and outdated materials, and to bring more current regulations into effect. They worked very long and very hard on it, went through half a dozen different drafts through my office that they worked on. I primarily did not review it for substance. There is a lot here, but there's not. And what I mean by that very simply is, there's a lot of technical adjustments, but in terms of substance, in terms of regulation, there's not a whole lot that's here with one exception. And that is, is that the, a landowner could be cited for failure to obtain a license to comply with all of these uniform codes by starting the work and saying, "Oops, I forgot to go get a license, or get a permit, or whatever needed to get done through the engineering department." And so now, there is a provision that says that their failure to act does constitute a violation. But other than that, there's not a lot of things that would interest the citizenry as much as it's technical and needs to happen in the engineering department. Based upon that, I'd ask permission to introduce the bill by Ty Lonely, please.
You can't build a bad building by the 2018 building code. That's the reason why we're choosing it. You know, just like as you were, you heard Sarah talking about, they're, they're coming down for preempting land use and building codes and stuff like that, and we're going to get our, our house in order. Because they'll be starting to force people into like the 20, 2021 code, and then the 2024, and it's going to electrification. This one still allows for gas units and stuff like that, which really is our area. We got a lot of that. We need, if we don't, and we have to do the next code up, they will require us to also update our energy code. And while we were able to, like, exempt out residential fire spring ports, you know, because nobody couldn't afford it, future codes will tell you, "Okay, you can't not do that. You got to put this in." And you have to put in a charging station for a electric pump. Let's get to where we can build the best house as we can without going to, please.
All right. If someone did that by title only, could you?
Yes, sir, with your permission for the council's consideration on first reading an ordinance of the City of Lahana mending the uniform building code and relates, related uniform codes previously adopted by the city, and parenthetically, I'll tell you that we're not going to publish this Bible here, we're going to do it by reference only, and our charter allows that.
So I'll introduce it by title only, ordinance 1643.
What else, when you're deemed edit? Do we need a second? Dean?
I'm sorry? Do we need a second? Nancy Bennett.
Anyone could, do we need a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
The power just went out.
Power out for Dean.
It's been going for a lot of years.
Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. Luckily, we're not on Dean's. Luckily, we're not on Dean's ear, good. All right, committee and board reports.
Are we on?
No. You're on, Dean, I'm sorry.
Me again?
No, committee and board reports. Do we have any committee and board reports?
Actually, I've got one more item, but I don't think we're ready yet.
Not, not for us yet?
Not me yet.
I didn't attend the last senior senate advisory board, but they did forward the notes to me. The first answer of the year was on January 6th. They had 27 people attend, and they were able to pay the band with the, what they took in at the door. There's 522 members. They did discuss raising dues from $9 to $12, but that discussion is going to be tabled pending further discussion. They are looking forward to planning a tea and art event. They're working with Klein's Makerspace to get that scheduled, so that's something upcoming in the future. And they're possibly, and then discussing possibly starting a formal volunteer program. So the board was on it, yeah. Thank you.
Any other committee and board reports? I will say that the Urban Renewal Board met, and I said this at the meeting, but I want to say it again, the way they did their board appointment, their recommendation was the way we need to do all our board recommendations. The interview process with Daniel running the show, and Jesse was very professional. We had, was it five letters? But only three, three people showed up for the interviews. But, but I said this at Tourism today, too. When we get a bunch of letters for more than one seat open, and we don't interview, or we don't do anything, it kind of makes people not want to put in letters anymore. So I recommend that all boards start doing that. They have openings, even if it's a reappointment, or, you know, they only have one, one opening, one letter, and just, you know, ask why they want to be on that board again, and go from there. So good job, Urban Renewal, to Daniel, to Nancy, for all you guys for doing that. That was a really good job on that. And if you guys, before all the power went out, the utility board had a really good meeting, a really long meeting. There's a lot of work we have to do on that, from conduit to, you know, just some solar stuff. There's a lot of stuff we have to get busy on, on our utility board meeting. So, you know, all these meetings are strained. That one, that one stayed upright. Yeah, you guys can go back and watch that. City managers' comments.
Did you get any more information on conduit?
We haven't got any more information.
They will be giving us some. They said they will be answering all the questions and stuff like that. They're compiling them now. Well, good news is that the only was a transformer that blew up on south side of town twice, and they're working on it, getting nothing replaced, or resetting it if they can.
I know the high school's having their blackout game tonight. I guess that's a perfect time for that.
I, I hope that, you know, you all looked at on your council agenda, you know, we put the sidebar on of all the council goals, and this is, goes back to the meeting that we had up at the hospital. And Melanie, thank you for ramenating those and putting them out like that. That's a great one. I'm going to stick mine in my drawer. You know, it's a good way to keep it out in front of you. This was something that Michael Yearman showed us that Chris Bueckler's doing, and, you know, the kind of keeps that. So, that's all I have, sir. You know, hopefully we get some good rain out of this, a good more shot of this rain.
Any questions for Rick?
Sure got a lot of potholes to patch this spring and summer.
I was taking Martin by him, man, you know, and I said, yep, it's pop-up season, you know, we're going to get freeze thaw.
People were asking too about the parking lines downtown.
They have to be once it warms up and stuff. We can't get in there now.
And there's a few people sore about the library and the senior citizens' reduction in activities. They were just commenting.
Well, hopefully, you know, we have that back on for next election, and please, vote for this. Let's not lose our quality of life items like library, and senior center, and pool, and golf course. That's, we can't, we can't let that happen. Please. It's mission critical now.
And keep in mind the 67%.
67% from outside the city. I have had more people from outside the city said, I'd vote for that if you guys, if I could. They realize it. You know, the people outside the community, they realize that they use our streets, our services, our library, everything. You know, the sales tax is the only way to go. If we go to property tax, that goes down to just the citizens of LaHunta. If we, like, raise the franchise fee, that goes to the utility people. Sales tax is the route to go to save LaHunta. Please, let's do it.
I just heard today, this is hard to believe, but I just heard today that there are some people who did not realize the library would be affected by not passing sales tax.
Oh, I've heard about all four of them.
I think you need to get more publicity out on what, everything that sales tax would help.
Well, those are four big ones. If we don't get something done this next year, they will close. I don't know how more blunt I can be.
You have to just keep repeating it.
Yep, well, we will. And I'm getting some community members that are already offering, hey, this next time, let me be involved. Well, that's what we need, folks.
Yes, it is.
You know, it isn't just me, it's all of us. And got to make sure this works. We're on a roll. And there's no place better to live at this point in time, in what we're going through, than right here in LaHuna, Colorado. Let me be clear, this is the place to live. You look around at all the other cities, and you look at the towns. I'll match our city with, against any of them. So please, you know, let's keep this going.
Ever review coming up or something? We were really passionate tonight.
Well, you know, when I heard the father, you know, I wanted to remember when he was talking about children love.
That's why you were flapping.
The other audience member.
Sheriff?
I just have a question. So when's the next time that that can be on a ballot measure?
We've already talked about a couple different options that we have. The soonest we can do is June. We can also do November, too.
Thanks.
And the, the library. We're coming up with cuts as much as we can, right? And the, the staff over there's like, how can, how can we not hurt the kids? How can we not hurt them? And how can we not? And, and if we don't affect, you know, the users out there, we'll never get on my album. They'll think that, you know, you don't get some magic box or something like that. There is no magic box. You know, this is mission critical.
I hope we don't have to close things down before people realize how critical it is.
Me too. Me too, Nancy.
Zeke?
The 1% is to catch up, then?
1% is just to keep everything going as is.
But we're not catching up, because we fell behind.
Because we fell behind.
Okay.
You know, Zeke, that's a great.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, that's a great one, because, you know, see, tried in 2015, and ran it for, like, public safety and stuff. It didn't pass. Kind of shocked me, you know, but then I thought, okay, you know. So we limped along, but as we were limping along, we're losing funds. Then thought, man, we got to have this. Well, it didn't happen. Now you make adjustments. And if it doesn't happen again, just don't have those things.
Try something new, definitely. I'm not, not saying that we made a bad decision, but we could have alleviated some of this with the old marijuana thing and jumped on it. We could have probably got some taxes from that. Not saying it's a lifesaver.
Right.
But it could have maintained what we get it to maintain in that particular time being. Little too late for that, number two. My other question being, I guess.
Is it, would you want to come up?
Oh, no, just had a question here, that's all.
Come on, get up there.
Hope you have another two, two hour session. No, I just, I just had a question about the 1%. I personally want to know a little bit more about what it's going to, and I'll tell you right now, I personally didn't vote for it. Because I didn't get, I guess my personal opinion on it was, the allocation of funds, no taxation without representation. Show me exactly what you're going to do. Exactly. I want to know exactly where it's going to go. And I've talked to a couple people, and they kind of feel the same way. Not saying that everybody else does, but I can't, I don't know. There's a lot of stuff that's going on. That's just the question and the statement that I had. We want to know as people that I've talked to, we want to know more where it's specifically going to, and that we can account that, that's exactly where it's going to go.
How do you think we could reach those people?
Oh, I can definitely be an advocate for a lot of people. I know they don't want to come up here and say anything, or they don't want to open their mouth. They don't want to have a part in it anymore because of whatever they don't want to do. And people are just fed up with it. They don't want to have anything to do with it.
I didn't know if they, like, Facebook, Instagram, or the newspaper?
I would say just put it out there, but give us some information. Instead of just putting out there, hey, we want the 1% or whatever, put some more information with it.
Like flyers?
Put it out there. Put it, no, put it out there, put it, hey, this is exactly what's going to happen. We want you people to see that this is allocated for this, and if you pass this, this is going to be allocated for this, specifically that. And not only that, afterwards specifically show us. I know you, you do the whole thing here, where you go down and you, you know, you do the rundown of all the stuff. She comes up and says, oh, well, this month, this was a da-da-da-da-da-da. People just need to see it more, I think. That's just kind of what I think. From some of the people that I've talked to and whatnot, I mean, a lot of people voted for it, and I'm happy for it. I would have too. My, my personal opinion was just show me exactly where it's going, and I want to know that's exactly where it's going. Don't want any misappropriation of funds, I think.
We did have some public forums, but I don't know.
Nobody likes to show, I know. And sometimes it's hard for people to show up, like myself too. I have a lot going on. Like, some of the school stuff, I can't attend it during the middle of the day, you know what I'm saying? I mean, who can get off of work to attend stuff during the middle of the day?
These were on the weekend. And we did put it on Facebook, but we just need more people like you, like they say, to get it out.
I try to make as, to as much things as I possibly can with as much as I have going on, so. Just, I think that's what a lot of people want. Just let them know a little bit more about what's going on. Handouts, flyers, pamphlets, little stuff like that makes a big difference as well, too. Your personal stuff, you guys are in the city. If you're pushing for it, I don't know what you can do about it, or if you can, or whatnot, but, you know, some more information some way, somehow, or whatnot. Get out, tell the people. Just be personal with the people, I think, as well, too, rather than Facebook and whatnot, too. A lot of person ability goes a long way with people and whatnot, too. So, just a thought. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Zeke.
Another hand up in the audience.
I haven't done the research, but I've heard that our city tax.
We really need you to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
My name is Chad Penner. I haven't done the research, but I have heard that our city tax, or maybe it's combined, I think it's city tax, that where's highest bubble
3%, bubbles 4%.
4%. We're, we're right up there.
They got over 100,000 people. We have 700.
So I don't know if people see those numbers, and that could be, that could be an issue also. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep.
Thank you.
And all the sentiments that have been expressed here tonight, I'm hearing, and they're actually going through the community. And I guess we have to take ownership as a council that we didn't carry the message with any more clarity, indicating what services would be impacted, and that the amount of the tax being collected would be 67% of people that don't even live in Lahana and shopping at our retail stores. I know we had some outreach close to within, I think, within that month prior to. But, and I don't know if early voting hurt us at that point, that people had already made up their minds and voted no, even before we started that outreach program. So, and I, and I know that, you know, councilperson Pantoia, and the mayor, and Rick, were out there at the library at least twice, and it wasn't, it wasn't, it was very sparsely attended. And the people that did attend it were pro. So I appreciate both of you expressing your sentiments.
I had another ordeal too. Sorry to interrupt there as well, too. And not to be mean or anything as well, just for.
Zeke, got to play by the rules.
Just for, just for feedback, and not be mean. And I think it was, I think it was very necessary, and I think the whole ordeal with the city raise was a good thing about the whole ordeal, but without passing the tax, it kind of put us in a tight predicament. Did we have a freeze on payments, on, on wages through the city?
No, right now.
No, no, not right now. During a certain point in time, did we have one over the last few years or whatnot? Is that why we didn't?
They were five years without that.
Is that why we didn't allocate that?
Right. It was about saving the workforce.
Okay, I understand that. That's why I'm asking to try to get that.
Public West just got through raising. There's up 9% just to keep the bleeding from coming out.
Okay. How many city workers are there? And did every city worker, did every city worker get a raise?
About 127, yeah.
Okay. At $5 apiece?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
Up to?
Right. Now, see, certain ones, you know, like.
I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, certain supervisors had, have people underneath them. The state changed what they were required to make.
Right.
From 47.5 to 50,000. Those people just went from 47 to 5.
Necessarily, we did that.
Because that was just me to state. They didn't get the full thing.
Okay, so, so we didn't increment it, we didn't increment it, we didn't increase it because we had a freeze on everything.
Right.
Over those years.
So, you know, like, last year was, the minimum was 1256. Well, the state went 1365. Next year, they're at 15. We're back in the same spot we were.
Right.
Yeah.
And we're kind of even in a same spot that we are too, right?
Sure. You know, the last salary survey I got, we're still at the very bottom.
Understandable, that's.
But we're a small, poor town.
I understand that. I understand. And the other thing I was going to say is, not to be mean, but that particular increase put a bad taste in a lot of people's hearts.
Sure. I, I understand that. And I, yes, but I know.
No, I understand what you did, what you did. And that's why I'm asking those particular questions there, so that can be voiced on there as well. I'm just letting you know from the public's point of view, a lot of people that I talked to as well, that was the case.
We only lost four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the benefit of anybody that's still awake, listening to this discussion, and Mr. Yala, I presume you'll be the first to volunteer for what I'm going to tell you all, is this council is prohibited by law from expending city monies to promote any kind of a ballot, just give me a chance, to promote any kind of a ballot issue for or against. So the form is pretty much limited to what people will hear in these meetings from us. I didn't make the rules, but it's up to the citizenry, in, to a great extent, to do what they feel is appropriate, whether that's an increase or not, but it's up to them to carry the ball. These folks are very limited by laws to what they can do, but you're not. So if you think that it's an appropriate thing, I'll bet you'll be the first one to volunteer to be on that committee.
Well, most definitely.
So we all live and learn as to how to get through this process, but the word does need to get out to the citizens. But the citizens need to get, come together and recognize this as a citizen initiative that needs to be considered. Thank you for allowing me to get on my soapbox.
And that's why I asked earlier.
Thank you.
If they could even speak large enough, I'm thinking.
Is there a committee already?
No.
We, we haven't even created the ballot issue yet. We have to do that first.
We've had one meeting. That was just to see what we can do and what we can't do, so we haven't explored it in depth. Governing body comments. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Mr. Maloff?
Mr. Mayor?
We're all here tonight, so you can.
Thank you. The, the hospital and the city entered into a consolidation agreement 25 years ago. And in that agreement, it says that the governing boards will meet once a year, not really to do business as much as just to look at each other and appreciate that we both perform vital services for the community. Every year, we alternate with regard to who pays for the meal. The meal is traditionally on the second, third Tuesday of a month at 6:00 at the hospital. They serve the meal. It's our turn this year to pay for it. We finish the meal, they push us out the door, and they conduct their business meeting. They would like a commitment from us as to whether we want to do this in February, March, or April. So tell me what your pleasure is, and I'll pass it on. March.
I say March 2nd.
Did I say la, what did I say?
March or April?
It's last Tuesday. March, 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 going?
March.
Okay, everybody going to be there? Great, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Did you want to say something, Sean? No?
No. I just thought it, maybe it'd be nice.
I just thought maybe it'd be nice for you to showcase your cooking skills, and maybe you could like cook up a brisket. That would look us.
McDonald's is open at 5:45 before the meeting.
Governing body comments, if Shane wants to start with that.
A brisket, thank you.
No, all right. Anyone else governing body comments?
So basically, that'd be the 28th of March on that date.
I am.
Hold on, Ed.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
I would like to see the youth council regenerated again. Now that we have such a youthful council here that can really have a positive impact on the students from the high school. And I think we not, we need to restart it, being more active.
Any other governing body comments?
There were, I had noticed that there were a few comments regarding the, the waste treatment center, the smell on the east side of town.
Yes, and you talked about that at utility board. Rick, do you wanna go ahead and give a brief overview of that?
You weren't there that one.
Well, you know, like, like yesterday, you know, the temperature pressure around here is about 20, 29, you know. Well, it got up over 30, and you get an inversion. Have you ever noticed, like, sometimes you'll go out and, like, people will have the fireplace on, but the fire, the smoke comes up and just comes right lung, and you could walk out and you can, you know, be at the office here, but I can smell bamboo panda and stuff. It is, you know, the air gets heavy up top, and it holds that down. Now, it's thirsty smell, you know, it's an oxidated ditch. You know, sometimes, you know, it does, you know, if they have to stir it, you know, or when we have to get all the sludge out of it. Because then you're upset, no apple cart, and all the bads don't come up. And especially during the wintertime. During summertime, we don't get that, that much. But during wintertime, yeah, it just happens a couple, three times.
And it's changing right now.
And it's doing right now, yes.
Did you say earthy smell?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is earthy smell. I mean, you know, if you smelt the other one, yeah, this is earth.
I agree, it does smell better than the other waste plant out there, but thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
But also, Tom said they're looking at other ways to get that odor out of there completely, so. Maybe give it some more earthy tones, I don't know.
Probably need more sales tax.
Better food, people eat.
Natural, it's natural.
I make a motion that, I make a motion that we move to executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS 24-6-40248.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Dana's already yes. Everyone else can vote. That's. Make some ready voting.
I'm sorry.
That's unanimous.
Will council be taking action after the executive session?
I hope not.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
For Lahana City Council and the people of southeast Colorado, I'm Adrian Hart with your southeast Colorado news.